We're going to call this special call session for Brazos County Commissioners Court. It's 10 o'clock December the 28th. The second item on the agenda is resolution for Judge Tommy Munoz for 27 years of service to Brazos County. Judge, come on up.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion.
Want to thank Tommy for his service, appreciate it.
Ditto.
Call for the vote. Call for the vote.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Come on up to the mic. Whereas Judge Tommy Munoz served citizens of Brazos County for 27 years in various county offices such as bailiff, court coordinator for county court law two, Justice of Peace Precinct Two, Place Two, and Justice of Peace Precinct Two. Whereas Judge Tommy Munoz as court coordinator for county court law two was nationally certified, received Chief Justice Charles B. Barrer Award, and graduated from the National Center of the State Courts in Williamsburg, Virginia. Whereas Judge Tommy Munoz was recognized nationally on CNN for his extraordinary effort in combating truancy in Brazos County and was inducted to college justice court judges through the Texas Justice Court Judges Association for 10 years during his tenure as Justice of Peace. Whereas Judge Tommy Munoz served Brazos County Justice of Peace for 12 years, presiding over civil Class C criminal cases and signing warrants for local police agencies and many other duties. Whereas Judge Tommy Munoz has proven to be a dedicated public servant, always performing the highest caliber of work. Whereas Judge Tommy Munoz will retire December 31st, 2018. Now therefore being resolved that Commissioners Court of Brazos County takes this opportunity to honor Brazos County Justice of Peace Precinct Two, Tommy Munoz, and thank him for his years of service to Brazos County and its citizens and wish him the best in his retirement. Due to adopted this Commissioners Court of Brazos County on 28th day of December. I want to give you the opportunity to... This isn't in the courtroom, but I mean, it is a courtroom, but I want to give you the opportunity to do this.
Alright, okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. It is indeed an honor to have served the residents of Brazos County and the constituents of JP Precinct Two. As I stand here before you, I'm reminded of the different people that I've worked for and I like to recognize them. First of all, Judge Sarah Ryan, who was the presiding judge in County Court Law Number Two, Judge Rick Davis, Judge Glennis Gore, and Judge Jim Locke. And I stand here before you, I'm reminded of several people when I first started to work here who had an impact in my career here. First of all, Judge Dick Holmgren, Judge Randy Sims, Commissioner Colley, and Commissioner Wilcock. All those, I remember them for many years, and of course, the court coordinators also that are now passed that have worked here in Brazos County for many years. For the 272nd District Court, Judge Delaney was Mary Ann Woolman, and for the 85th District Court, Becky Mick. And also, at least, last but not least, is my wife of 45 years, Margaret, who has given me all the support through my years here in Brazos County and all the different departments. And I wish to thank everyone that I came in contact with. And thank you very much, and God bless the United States of America, and God bless Brazos County. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Judge. The next item on the agenda is resolution honoring Mark Hamblin for 24 years of service to Brazos County.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
I'd like to thank Mark for his service as well, appreciate the job he did.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Whereas Mark Hamblin served citizens of Brazos County as district clerk for 24 years, and whereas Mark Hamblin served Brazos County District Clerk for processing felony, juvenile, and misdemeanor cases, supporting the Attorney General in child support and family law cases, and assistance to local law enforcement, and supporting citizens serving as jurors and serving all the courts in some capacity. Now therefore being resolved that Commissioners Court of Brazos County takes the opportunity to honor Brazos County District Clerk and thank him for his years of service to Brazos County and citizens, and to wish him the very best in his retirement. Due to adopted by vote, this Commissioners Court of Brazos County on the 28th day of December, 2018. And you've got the opportunity to speak into it.
Mine was short so I could spend more time at the mic, Judge. Could I get my family to please come forward? If y'all could just line up, Wes, Kyle, Shell, Kyle Doogie, Beemy, Poppy, my dad. Yes, I want the children too, where the wives and the children. They're the most important. I want to express, a lot of times, we are the ones that get the accolades and don't realize the support behind the man or the woman. And today, I wanted to talk to you and introduce you to some of the family members that I have that support me. The one in the back is the quiet one of the family. He's an introvert, and he will not talk to you very much, but if you get a chance, you might be here all day and talk to my brother-in-law, Kyle Doogie. Him and his wife, Shelley, there you go. They sold their own company about three years ago, and enjoy ranch in South Texas, and they also enjoy a home out in Indian Lake Estates. The next one I'd like to introduce is Wes Mangin. Wes? Wes is my nephew. Wes surpassed all of the records that a well-known coach at Texas A&amp;M University, whenever they both went to McNeese State. Coach went years ago. And Wes actually even played for the Minnesota Vikings at one time, and he, thank goodness, he got out of football. His wife, Lauren, is a teacher, or was a teacher here in Bryan, and they have two children, Wyatt and Bo. There's Bo, hi Bo. He's hiding. The next one I'd like to introduce is Kyle Mangin. Kyle? And his wife, Morgan. Kyle, you will probably recognize the name, Kyle Mangin, middle linebacker for Texas A&amp;M University for three years. He was there with two figures that we all know, Johnny Manziel and Vaughn Miller. In fact, Kyle sent out a tweet yesterday about their picture back whenever in 19... What year was it, 2009? And it already has 90,000 likes on it. I didn't get credit for taking the picture, but Vaughn and Kyle remain close today. Kyle works here in College Station. They own a home in what estate? Milliken Reserve. His wife, Morgan, is co-owner with Morgan and Walsh Real Estate in College Station. My mother-in-law and father-in-law live out off Leonard Road, corner of Chick Lane and Leonard Road, and I knew whenever I found my wife years ago, the one thing that they did is that they believed in family. And we might talk between ourselves and be mad at one another, but when it comes down to it, we're all there to support one another. And for them to be here today, it means the world to me. Governor Conrad Mahon worked for the Sheriff's Department for many years. My mother-in-law was at the Children's Museum for many years. My dad worked at the Sheriff's Office for many years in different capacities. He and I have always been close, and when he, Mom, and I had Hamblin Tire Center, some of the best years of my life, it just wasn't meant to be to continue. My son, Jared, got two degrees from A&amp;M, biomedical science and agricultural economics, and if I get that wrong, just don't say nothing. But I know he did end up with the two degrees from A&amp;M, and he is now hopefully going to be purchasing loyal units at Agri Services. My daughter, Katie, graduated magna cum laude from the University of Texas and Redcomb's Business School. She is our wayward child. Her husband, Lucas Collinett, my son-in-law, couldn't be here today. Just my luck, Dallas Cowboys are doing good this year. Lucas works in the executive offices with the Dallas Cowboys and has been for about nine years now. And they now are living in North Richland Hills, Charleston area. My spouse. I told Sheriff Kirk about two weeks ago, we were qualifying with Sheriff's Department, and I told him that my wife thinks he hung the moon, he was sweet as he could be. Sheriff said, "Mark, I believe in God because miracles happen." He said, "Why she ended up with you?" I have no idea. But I've been blessed because that support, regardless of how good a man, how good I am or not. Seems like yesterday when I walked in, and when I came into the office, I had a chair and a telephone sitting on the floor. And ever since then, I cannot tell you enough, any of the accolades that I have is due to the staff that are here and the past. They have supported me. And I can't say enough about Sheriff Kirk and the Sheriff's Department and the processes that we go through with criminal paperwork and making sure inmates end up in the right places, and that they are accredited to what they are supposed to do. I can't say enough about the information technology department and the advances that we have made. I take no credit for any of the things that we've accomplished. For the times that I have fallen and fallen short, or just plain done things wrong, I ask your forgiveness. I believe that's what a Christian is supposed to do. Judge, I've taken way too much time, but I want to tell you thank you. It means a lot that y'all took time to recognize us, to recognize me, and we are very blessed in our nation. And I can't say enough about this Commissioners Court. If it wasn't for the vision that you have, to listen to each of us as elected officials or department heads, it's hard because you don't have an unlimited bank account. But you take the time to listen to us and try to appropriate what you can when you can. And I know that with sincere hearts that each of you do that. I'm very thankful that y'all are here for Brazos County. With that, I will stop, and I'm very thankful that I didn't break down, but one time. Thank you very much.
And the one thing that I really will... Mark, the one thing that I really will agree with you, you married a bug yourself.
Yeah.
Anyway, I knew him way before Mark came along, and I guarantee he did. Thank you, Mark.
He did say he was blessed.
Let's see, we took a vote on that, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Number four.
Number four is approval of official bonds and...
There are none.
There are none, okay. Alright, good. I think we've got them all in now. Number five is amended travel policy effective January 1, 2019.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number six, permission for Sheriff's Office to apply for Texas DOT FY 2020 Selectives of Traffic Enforcement Program Step Grant.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number seven is funding agreement with Brazos County Rape Crisis Center, Inc., DBA Sexual Assault Resources Center, FY 2019.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number eight, inter-local cooperation contract between the Department of Public Safety and Brazos County for administrative and operational support to DPS.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number nine, is contract with Arms for Juvenile Residential Services Term of Contract is January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 10, is contract 18-080 for election equipment recommended awards to Hart Inter-Civic. And I think we've got a few folks that would like to speak. Okay, Michael Jackson.
Howdy, thanks for letting me speak today on this particular issue. I do want to say that I know that there's been a number of months of research by staff and some open forums. I do know that in the recent election cycle, with everything that was going on with that, a lot of those things got lost to the public. And so, some of us are stepping up kind of late to talk, but I do want to say that the voting is the foundation of democracy in this country, and it needs to be protected at all, at all points. And having a paper trail is a redundant system that allows for that. And I think that we all saw in the last election cycle that there were a number of extremely close races, and I think we're going to see that a lot more in the future across the nation where recounts were needed, there were questions raised as to the integrity of voting, the electronic systems, a lot of times there were recounts ordered. And it gives trust to the citizens when there's a physical ability to double-check your vote as you go to the machine, and also when you know that there's a recount happening, that there's something physical. Because unfortunately, electronics break down, there's people behind it that do the programming and stuff that we hope we can trust. And so, I would like you to consider possibly putting off the final vote on this a little bit longer, or not selecting the system that has no paper, redundant system, because I think that it's well-needed, and I think it allows us to trust the system, to trust the courts, to trust the integrity of what we're doing, because we need that today in this country. And so, I would really greatly appreciate it. And if you are delaying, reaching out a little bit more to the public for public input, because I'd like to consider myself kind of on top of things, but I heard about the public display after the fact through the news. And unfortunately, I was hearing a number of the things more after the fact, and today I was able to luckily be off of work and able to come and actually talk and move forward with this. And so, maybe a webpage or something where you ask for input would be helpful for people who can't get off of work and stuff to come to the meetings, or lives are kind of busy. And so, but I appreciate y'all considering that as you're moving forward with this decision today. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. John Miller, and I would ask that we limit it to four minutes?
Four, three.
Four is what, is what we've got in the back of the agenda?
Okay, hopefully, I won't take that long. I think I've got it boiled down to two points. The first one is that this morning in the Eagles article, they quoted one of the commissioners who, I'm not going to say whose name it was, because I read it before my coffee, and I'll probably get the name confused. But basically, they said that they felt there was no difference between the Hart and the ES and S system, because in the end, they both are counted electronically. And actually, that is the difference with the ES and S system. There is a paper ballot that is verified by the voter before they submit it. When it's submitted, it is read into the machine, but it is also stored. You have the machine count, so you can quickly get a count at the end of the evening. But if there's any questions about the machine count, whether, you know, who knows what went on, they can always go back and manually count the paper ballots. That is the difference. The ES and S system has a paper ballot that's been verified by the individual voters. That paper ballot remains to verify their vote, and it can be manually counted after the election. The Hart system does not have that. Now, the other thing sort of plays into that as well, my second point. I understand the Commissioners Court has a fiscal responsibility to the citizens of Brazos County, but on this issue, I'm afraid you might come up penny wise and pound foolish. There regarding the voter verifiable paper audit trail, there are legislation in the chute at both the federal and state level that will probably require such a voting system well within the work-life of whatever system you choose today, if you choose today. If you go with the Hart system, it's very likely that before that system, you get your money from that system, you're going to have to choose another system because of federal or state law. So, I would really appreciate if you would take more time and reconsider your vote. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thomas Spellman.
I'll be quick, because I'm nervous. Basically, with any system, if there's not a paper audit trail, how can you have any confidence in it? And with the electronic systems, all you have to go on if there's ever a recount is what the machine told you. With the paper trail, you have an unchangeable artifact that can be recounted, and that gives you better confidence in the system. And if we can't trust the voting, what can we trust about government?
TC Langford.
Judge, Commissioners, even though I'm the chair of the Democratic Party, I have had extensive conversations with people that are apolitical, that are Republican, that are Libertarian, and this crosses all party lines. People have serious concerns about the integrity of their election. We all know that it was traced to user error, that Beto votes got switched to Ted Cruz, and Ted Cruz votes got switched to Beto votes. There is no way after the fact to go back and determine whether somebody cast an accurate ballot or not. We should not have equipment that is that susceptible to user error. Too many people go in and vote rarely. Some people vote once every four years. Some people vote once every six years. It should be easy to understand. A piece of paper, they can look at it, yep, that's my vote. And when they're looking at that piece of paper, they haven't voted yet. Only after they look at it and submit that piece of paper does that vote count. People are entitled to that. I absolutely recognize there are financial concerns. I have some concerns about the PowerPoint that was presented with the financial information. It was a summary. I don't know what y'all have had the privilege of seeing. I think that those proposals should be more transparent to all of us, because I noticed some glaring errors in the financial PowerPoint that was presented. First of all, the Hart system in the financial comparison did not include vote by mail. Yet, vote by mail numbers were attributed to the ES and S system. So, of course, ES and S off the top is going to be more expensive. We've reached out to other counties that have had comparisons of the two, that had the same financial concerns, and to a man, they have come back and said the ES and S system was less expensive than what the numbers we have. And it's because you have the ability to cherry pick the different types of add-ons. We don't need a Cadillac system. We're not asking for a Cadillac system. I also understand that there were security concerns about those ballots being left overnight. I submit that the only place they would be left overnight is during early vote. There are five voting locations, four of those voting locations are county-owned buildings. Only one is not, and that's Galilee Baptist Church. And if the security concerns could not be addressed at Galilee, we can sit down and try to negotiate an alternative to that. I'm suggesting that finances and inconveniences are not a good enough reason to diminish the integrity of our vote across all party lines. And I'm asking you to delay this. I'm suggesting that ES and S and Hart representatives have both told me that the equipment we have right now is fine for another year or two or three. We can, you can, have an opportunity to more fully investigate this in the next four to six months and still have equipment onboard in time for a 2020 election. And that's what I'm asking you to do. I'm asking you to not rush into this. I'm asking you to make the financials behind it more transparent to the public, and I'm asking you to delay your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Gilbert.
I'm a concerned citizen of Brazos Valley, Bryan, Texas. This morning, I was awoken with several phone calls concerning this issue. First of all, I'm visually impaired, and I'm so proud to be able to vote. I think y'all did a wonderful job by getting the machines y'all have. But at this time, I'm here today representing my family and concerned citizens in my neighborhood. What I gather, we would like to see a paper trail without voting. It will help us several ways. The speakers before me did a wonderful job. They're here today to let you guys know that we are concerned. I pay lots of taxes in Brazos County, and I think I should be here to speak about my needs and my wishes. And I would like for you guys to consider listening to the citizens of Brazos Valley and work with us. I think that paper ballot would make myself and lots of other people feel lots better by having a backup when we vote. I'm not going to say much more, but please consider what you guys have heard today. I'm not going to say much more, but please consider what you guys have heard today from the citizens of Brazos Valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. I, you know, I'd like to, I don't remember who it was made to comment about the comment in the paper. I think that was attributed to me, and it didn't have anything to do with the paper. It was talking about hackability of the electronic side of both of them. That a, if you're going to hack, ESNS starts out with an electronic system similar to what HART has, and if, if one can be hacked, the other can be hacked. That's, that's what that quote was about, not about what happens after that. Some of the issues that I see with, with the ballot, I mean, you could look across the nation in this last election, and there were a number of states and localities that had problems with paper ballots because of Marster. And machines wouldn't, wouldn't read. They had lines backed up because they were, you couldn't, the next person couldn't vote because the machine wasn't reading. And so there were issues with, with paper that caused problems that had nothing to do with anything hacking it, but it was of their nature. You know, it's, it's in the humidity, and in some places, it was rain. And we know around here, we, unless we're in a drought, we get plenty of rain, and we did get some rain during the, the elections. So that would, that would have been a possibility. So it might be, you know, those kinds of things would be issues with paper. You know, you know, all the, we, I'm sure we have all done a lot of studying to try to do, be as informed a decision maker in this process as, as we can be. And, you know, the things that I read showed that it's not just the machine you buy that could cause a problem with, whether it's the Russians or whoever, somebody hacking. I mean, it can be even the, the state voter list and, and the, where that's kept. And then when people vote, and the e-poll book that sends the notice to, back to the state and says, you know, this person has voted. If somebody's going to hack, I mean, there's a good chance they may hack something in there rather than the local machines. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure that our, our syst, I will tell you, I think there's concerns about our election system and, you know, and what, and trying to make sure that we're, we're, got the best system that we can get. But I think there's, there's so many issues out there that nobody has been able to solve yet. And, and this is just my opinion, but we've done well with HART. They've, they've done us a good job over the last, I mean, they estimated that that was going to be about an eight to 10-year life in the thing, and we've got 16 out of it. So we've done well with it there. So they've, they've helped with our elections for a lot of years. I don't really see, I, I hear what you're saying about the paper trail, but to me, and I'm just one guy on the court, but that's, to me, that's not as important because you may not be able to read that thing. If Marster's causing you a problem, even on the day of election, you're going to have folks that will not be able to, potentially, they're going to have to either stand in line to wait to vote, or they're, they're not going to get to vote. So, and that was part of the problem across the nation in this last election, is the lines backed up, and there were people in line for hours and people leaving because they had to go to work, they had other things to do. They went to the, to vote, the polling place to vote and expected to be in and out of there in a short amount of time, and it didn't happen. So those are all issues that I've looked at, you know, and I, I still come back to conclusion that, that I personally believe that the HART system will serve us well. And, and I know that Charles, our purchasing agent, has recalculated. He took a look to try to verify what the numbers were on the cost, and he's, he's done some adjustments, and maybe that was the adjustment of what you're talking about. I think TC was talking about the one that HART didn't have calculated in there for something, but he did some recalculation. It, the, it looks like the spread over five years is more like some 400 and something thousand, but it's still a significant number, even after taking a look at it again. And I don't know, Charles, you want to kind of share some of that?
Can y'all, can everybody see that?
No.
Perhaps a larger font.
No.
Commissioners, we looked at the information again. We hand tallied the information to try to make sure that we had the calculations correct. We rechecked, double-checked, and triple-checked.
I don't think your mic is on.
Is the mic on?
I don't think it is.
Your mic.
I can hear it projecting out here. Can y'all hear it?
Okay.
Sorry about that. So we reran the numbers. We double-checked and triple-checked again. Because there were some concerns brought up that maybe our numbers weren't, they didn't make sense, as I think some of the public has mentioned today. So we want to make sure that we present an objective facts and figures. So we worked with the Elections Office to try to go through the information. So what we've found, these are, these are, again, are the summary. And we have the details, but we're not able to get into the details and distribute that to the public because of negotiations and public purchasing law. It's, that's not, that's not good practice to do that. Just to discuss it, then you give people unfair advantages. We have to make sure we keep open and equal competition with the vendors. So in the HART contract, their proposal included no increase in the maintenance fees for the first five years. And so we looked at this two ways for ESNS. We looked at it in their proposal, they submitted that there would be a 5% increase, and that would be done annually, up to a 5% increase. So we looked at that in two different ways to give ESNS the most equal footing. We looked at it with a 5% in the first column on the maintenance, and then we also looked at it with no increase in the second column. And so, this is hard to, it's hard to do with. So that, if you look at the poll book licenses, this is the information. The first year, HART is only charging $7,500 for the licenses. The second year, and it's all included in the proposal, the second year, it goes to the $11,500. Essentially, they're discounting the first year. ESNS, theirs starts out at $15,000. And then again, using the 5% increase per year, we go through it, and it continues to climb. The same thing on the voting equipment licenses. And then we looked at it over here, using a stagnant, no increase, again, because we never know what the negotiations could turn out if we were to, to go that route. And then even with that information, on top of the additional costs, the ESNS equipment does not come with freestanding booths. We have to buy tables to put that equipment on. We have to have additional things to run that, to run that particular type of equipment. And that is reflected here in this initial cost. I can't remember what all the... Includes power strips, tables, we have to buy supply bags, we have to buy carts, and then we have to buy shelves. And all of that stuff, with the exception of power strips, is included in the HART proposal. And we ask ESNS for that, and they did not. That's not something, they can sell secondarily, but it's a pass-through. They recommended that we go somewhere else. That's not their bread and butter. They sell election equipment, and they, they do that. I have no idea.
What's the question?
I just wondered if I could ask a question. Could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Why would you buy new ones every year? Why wouldn't you just buy one?
We wouldn't, that's a, we only figure that one time into this cost.
Tables cost that much?
$100,000 on tables?
No. That is the year one, okay, so let me, if I may, let me go down. The, the, the year one total includes, includes...
All those add up to...
It includes the acquisition cost, it includes the first year ballot processing, licensing, additional election support, as well as the miscellaneous additional cost. And then the second year does not include that. The second year only includes the licensing for the poll pads or the poll books, the voting equipment licenses, and then the election support. I don't know what's on.
The $14,000 is the one that covers the additional tables and everything, the one-time cost?
Correct, yes, sir.
And that's only on the first year.
Yes, sir.
And it is the election support.
And that's distributed...
Oh, well, your support is the tables and...
No, ma'am. The election support is the manpower that we hire. It's a contract that we have with Texas Voting Systems to help with the elections. They help distribute the equipment, they help do some, I'm going to speak out of turn, I don't want to get it wrong. They help do the programming and help set up the election.
So it's zero on the other side?
That is the additional cost.
That's the incremental moat.
That is incurred or would be incurred by Brazos County due to the size and additional equipment that is born with the ESNS equipment. We still have the contract cost, and we did not reflect that in HART, but we didn't reflect it in the ESNS side either. That is only the additional cost that will be incurred by Brazos County for that equipment.
Texas Voting currently delivers, they help us program, they help, they deliver, they do all our warehouse work, they deliver, set up for Election Day, early voting, and then they also go and pick up the equipment afterwards, take it back to the warehouse, and then after Canvas, they do our backup. So they do all that currently. And so the reason there is no, a zero amount on the HART side is because on the ESNS side, there are additional things that they have to do that's, that's going to, that's the increase to the contract. There will be no increase to the HART contract, but there will be increases to the ESNS contract because of the additional locations that they'll pick up and additional equipment that they'll have to deliver. So that's above and beyond what we currently paid them.
Is there any relationship between Texas Election Systems and HART?
Texas Voting Systems?
Texas Voting Systems.
No, sir.
I can't imagine there's that much difference in just setting up equipment for an election.
Well, we currently have five locations on Election Day who pick up their own equipment. And so those five locations would have to be delivered with the ESNS system because the, the ESNS system is, is, the size, they can't load it in their cars. So it has to be delivered by truck. And so, right, then the, plus the additional things that they have to deliver. So you include five extra locations, the tables, the carts, and things like that that they would have to deliver. So it's more manpower for Texas Voting, additional vehicles for Texas Voting, and things like that, so.
Judge, if the court's going to entertain more questioning, I'd ask that each party be recognized by the court and state their name prior to asking the question.
Yeah, I guess we should have done that. You're correct. Charles, you want to finish up?
If I may, right quick, just to finish going through this spreadsheet. So we've, we've tried to, we've tried to collect this and information and put it in a more easily seen format. So that the initial year includes, the initial year one total includes, for all three, includes the purchase of the equipment, the poll books, the election equipment, and then it includes the ballot processing, the annual fees or the licenses for the poll books and the voting equipment, then the election support, and then the miscellaneous additional cost. The second year for each of them only includes what, the ballot processing, the, and then the licensing, and then the election support. And again, that's, that follows the same pattern year now. So according to our calculations, the five-year investment... I'm nervous and shaking, this thing's going really fast. I apologize. Okay, so the five-year investment with the HART system is the $2,154,000. Now, we tried to give ESNS the option again because we didn't, didn't discuss it with them. If we assumed no increases in fees, in the licensing fees per year, we wanted to give them the benefit of the doubt and compare it using that. And it's still an additional $336,000 above and beyond what we would pay if we used HART. Or if we have what, what the information they sent us based on their proposal, it's $412,000.
Okay. Tell us your name so we...
TC Langford. Has HART's paper ballot system been compared financially?
It doesn't have a paper ballot system.
Not yet, because it's not a certified, it's not certified.
She's talking about the one they did demo. They did demo on paper system, but not the HART system. We did in the demo, those of you who attended the demo, there was a paper-based system for HART. But that paper-based system would include us having 420 printers for Election Day, and so it just was not conducive to what we felt like our office or IT or Texas Voting could maintain. Because each of those voting stations has to have their own individual printer. It's not just like one printer to each location. So when we started negotiating contracts, we just, we did not look at that, that system at all.
Jody.
Jody Quimby. If you could explain for us the difference in the ongoing services from year one through five? In other words, HART would be providing a service that would be described as A, and ESS would be providing a service described as B. Understand, there's some differences with respect to how much field service they provide, and was that taken into account with the numbers we see here? In other words, are there ongoing services apples and apples, or are they apples and oranges? We've got a chart here showing apples and oranges because it's two different systems. And the ongoing costs are what really drive the overall up a lot.
As far as the, the licensing and support, yes, they are apples and apples. Because after we get off the ground, both, both vendors have on-call systems that we use for support, but the biggest, the biggest cost of that is the licensing itself. So both of them are licensing and support, and they are comparable. I mean, it's...
If I might, the reason I ask is the people I called in other counties tell me there's a big difference in the service between HART and ESS. And that's the reason I asked the question. You're telling me it's the same, and I, I don't, I don't understand why I've got a, got a different answer.
Okay. But are you talking about what we pay for or the level of service, like in customer service?
The level of service that's considered in the comparison. Here's what I was... The level of service that's considered in the comparison. Here's what I was asking about. In other words, are we considering the same kind of service on the yearly basis, or is it different?
No, it is the same kind of service. And I can tell you that I've worked with both vendors because I've been in two different counties. And both vendors, their customer service and their level of customer service is very similar.
Okay.
Can you roll up just a little bit here? On the chart. Hang on, I wrote there. The... What you have is additional election support. That's what we talked about a while ago. That's the tables and hardware and stuff.
Texas Voting Systems, yes, sir.
And then the...
No, that's actually the delivery and transport.
It's delivery of the tables. It's setup of the election equipment support.
Michael Jackson, the miscellaneous initial cost, it's only one time. That is what my understanding is, is the purchases that need to be made one time to support the equipment. The additional election support, from what I understand, is the over and above to carry a larger system to the voting places and take it back again than the current contract allows.
Correct.
Let's... Let me... There's a young lady in the back that wanted to speak. Go ahead and...
I'm Mindy Bergman. So I understand where the...
Give us your name.
Mindy Bergman.
Okay.
I understand where those numbers come from, the over and above. But over and above what? Because I think that the public feels very differently about seventy-four hundred dollars over seventy-five billion dollars versus seventy-four hundred dollars over seventy-four hundred other dollars. Do you see what I'm saying? So can you fall apart for us what those dashes are? Because if it's a marginal increase, it doesn't feel like very much to us.
Sure.
There's a contract with that company currently that...
No, what is it?
And they take it out. They take it... And I don't know what the number is, but whatever it is, that's how much they would charge.
No, I understand it. I actually do spreadsheets. I understand it. I'm curious what it is because I think our reaction to it is very different if that's a lot of money over the current contract versus a very small amount of money over the current contract. So if the current contract is a million dollars, that's practically a rounding error. That's the kind of... That's fluctuations in gas prices.
Ms. Bergman, to answer your question, now we're on the fly here, so please...
Yeah, approximate, approximate.
But approximately the Texas Voting Systems contract, depending on the election, like presidential year, will be more than just local elections. But it would be in the range of thirty, twenty to forty thousand dollars, something like that. So it could be, again, we're talking, you know, math on the fly in front of the bugs in the public. But we're talking, you know, between, say, twenty percent and... I don't know. That's the range that we're looking at.
Okay, this lady over here wanted...
Hi, Janet Duffy, and I don't want to ask you to do math. I don't do math in public either. But this raises the question about the cost of the mail-in vote. Could you address that? Is the cost of the mail-in voters included in one and not included in the other? Or is that something that's excluded below? Could you address T.C.'s question about the cost of the mail-in ballots included in the cost of the ESNS but not included in the cost of the HART? I think is the point that she raised. I just haven't heard that addressed yet.
Yes, ma'am. What I may, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we have the ballot processing. So the three hundred and thirty dollars is for the rolls of paper, I believe for the thermal printer, that go from the poll pad. You get your number, and then you go enter that number into the machine and vote. The other one, because it's a printed, like everybody's talked about, it's a printed form. You can't print that on regular eight-and-a-half by eleven paper. So you have to buy a form, and then they're pre-numbered so that you can verify, travel through the chain of custody, or however that works. That's... You have to buy that particular form. You can't just print that up ourselves on regular paper and vote that way. So that's why the additional cost.
Okay, so what you just said was that the mail-out ballots are also pre-numbered and...
But I didn't...
And that's included. That's why that's higher. But yes, that's included in the HART. They're not controlled.
Well, in HART's system, we print those on regular paper, and it's just a regular bulk paper that we buy. And the numbers are printed from the system. They print out on the ballot, pre-printed. But with the ESNS's system, you have to buy a pre-numbered, specific paper for their system. So there is an additional cost. Yes, so there is additional cost for those.
I want to let... Two more. I know T.C. and Jody want to speak one more time, then we're gonna...
I just want to clarify back to Mindy's question. That is zero on HART for the support cost because it's provided by Texas Voting Systems? What is not in this spreadsheet is thirty to forty thousand dollars a year paid to Texas Voting Systems? Is that what I heard you say?
What we tried to... When I tried to be... I tried to be open upfront about that is that we were trying to show the additional cost. We're not trying to show the full cost of a total election. We're trying to see the impact of a vendor selection, one over another, on... And what would that fiscal impact be? We're not trying to show the total impact, because then we would have to take into consideration the full cost and salary of the voting department, and then their office supplies and travel and the rental of vehicles.
Yeah, but that's not what I mean. You've attributed certain costs to ESNS that are zeroed out under HART, but it's because it's directly attributed to a forty thousand dollar contract with Texas Voting Systems. That's what I heard you say.
Right. We currently have... If we stay with HART, the Texas Voting System contract will not increase at all.
What is it now?
It depends on the election, and it's twenty to forty thousand dollars.
Okay, and that's not reflected on this spreadsheet, correct?
Okay, yes.
It would be added to both sides. If the contract is, let's say, twenty thousand, then you'd add twenty thousand to HART. You'd add twenty thousand to ESNS. So it would increase both by the same amount. And what they did was all they added in was the increase in the cost. And that's... And it's only... There's only an increase in ESNS.
So for ESNS, it is only the additional cost that we would be paying for Texas Voting. So these are the things, the increases that we would expect to see.
Jody, do you have one more comment?
From what I understand, Charles, it's true. The big difference in the numbers on the chart, am I correct in understanding that it's the license fees that are so different? Is that what that is? And I want to make another comment if I have to.
So if you look at the initial, we put a total here just so you could see what the cost of the equipment and the first year licenses would be. And there is very little difference there. But in the licensing, as well as the additional ballot processing and the additional election support, they'll provide a more of a spread there, a differential between the two companies.
So is the most of the difference in the licensing cost?
I have to let you make that determination yourself. I mean, the numbers are here.
Well, I thought those were the same a while ago.
The numbers are here. I mean, the...
Those licenses. But as you sum it up in the summary at the bottom with the years one through five, is it correct that the major difference is the additional cost of licensing? That's... We've talked about the smaller numbers, but the cost of licensing appears to be what the major difference in cost is. Is that correct?
The reason I hesitate to answer, I mean, major, I mean, to me, eighty-four thousand versus one hundred fifty-six thousand in year five, to me, that's major, but I mean, that's relative to the individual. I don't want...
No, I'm not...
I'm not trying to make... I don't want to make any assumptions.
That's not my point. I was just wanting to know if you... I mean, we should be able to know if the big difference here is the licensing. I don't think it's fourteen thousand dollars for tables, okay? So is that where our big difference is in the licensing cost? Because that's what you... You've got a section here that says voting equipment licenses is so different. It's almost twice as much in some respects there.
And then even if you don't do the increase, it's time and a half on the zero increase. So the third column is a zero percent increase per year. Does that make...
All right, but that's the major difference when you sum up at the bottom of those figures. Let me add something about the paper ballot.
Okay.
Judge, you mentioned paper ballots getting wet and that sort of thing. We do all this stuff indoors. You know, we've got air conditioning, and we operate in a reasonable way. The paper that is used by the ESS system has undergone years of testing, and it's not just a piece of paper. It's a manufactured card. It also has a number on it currently, and up until this year, they had numbers on each card. That is changing this year. It's a blank card. The number will be printed at the voting station so that that alleviates that part of the accounting for... After you get through, you don't have a pile of ballots with numbers on them, and you have to account for that. They're all blank ballots when you start. With respect to the hacking of things, if anything could be hacked, none of us in this room knows. But if you have the paper record, that's the absolute answer to our issue here. I don't take the item of being concerned about moisture in the paper as a major issue. Like I said, we all vote indoors. The integrity of election has to do with who runs the election. That's us. And no one in our county is looking for an election to be done wrong. Nobody.
Well, I can just tell you that this past election in November, you can look. They all voted indoors. They didn't do it outside. And there were problems with moisture with the ballots, and ESNS was one of the ones, the machines that they were using. So it's an issue. I... It's an issue.
If it was an issue, the state wouldn't approve it, since...
It's going on. It was going on in November of 2018. There were a number of states that dealt with it.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay.
There are so many hands that haven't asked questions.
We've had a lot of discussion about it.
You have people that have not asked a question.
This isn't...
It is a special session.
Yeah.
Which allows for special concerns, I think. We need to hear everybody.
Well, question's been called, so I'm... I mean, I realize most everybody's had the opportunity. We've been here a good while discussing it, so I'm... Question's been called, and let's... Do you have any issue? Okay, go ahead, and we've got one that hadn't spoke yet, so give us your name.
Mariana Arnold. I've done just about every vote in here, election job here. What concerns me more than anything is HART's reluctance to do ongoing idiot-proofing. And they... That problem with the votes flipping has been around for multiple years. They... First, they don't take responsibility, and second, they didn't fix it. You know, that can... That is something that speaks to their commitment to providing a complete and accurate... A complete and accurate election. Now, there are idiot-proofing problems that occur every year. One year, we had an overvote. We had the votes flipped. And we... One year, we lost one of the hard... We didn't count in one of the hard drives that came back from the vote tallyer. To me, the very most important thing about an election vendor is their commitment to making the vote secure. And HART doesn't seem to even care. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we've had... We've had to call for the vote, and I think most everybody's had the opportunity to speak that has wanted to.
I would like to say you addressed some of the concerns that I brought up while standing there, yet you haven't allowed me to address your concern, addressing my concern. And that's one of the things. Michael Jackson is my name. I would like to just make a comment on that, and so...
One more comment. Go ahead.
So I heard the same stories of the ballots with moisture, and yes, that was a concern. It's a concern of mine, too, okay? The integrity of the voting system is a concern of mine also. I will say, I heard just as many stories about electronic voting systems going down and causing great lines. Also, places that lost power and went down and great lines. There are going to be things that go wrong with any system. I agree. They're all hackable. They're all... The place that they're at is gonna have humidity. It's gonna have power outages. It's going to have all of that. So I hear what you're saying. But at the end of the day, I go back to what a number of people here have said, which is a paper ballot gives us the opportunity to do a physical, old-fashioned way of counting or recounting if necessary, and all of the systems could end up with a problem. So I do hear what you're saying, but at the same time, there are many other problems that could go on. At the same time, and a ballot allows us to cover for those problems for an electronic system. We have to trust that when you reboot it back up, that it comes back up with the same information, and that when you ask it to do a recount, it does it accurately and not just the way it was the first time, so.
And my only comment to that is they both start out electronic. And if ESNS prints it out, then it becomes paper. It's not like you've got paper and you're punching or scratching, so... And I'm...
But I can check that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, I... Vote's been called. We're...
Judge, can we get a copy of the summary?
I don't see any problem with that. I think we're gonna do a hand count on this. So all in favor of purchasing from HART, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, and I appreciate y'all coming in with your concerns.
May I?
Hope you'll understand that we've... I've, you know, I've done a lot of study and looked at it, and, you know, I guess we'll agree to disagree, but thank you.
May I comment that my disagreement is because of, as you and our colleagues, we have different opinions about the systems and how usable they are. We have basic disagreements. We agree we want integrity in the process, and for me, that is the most important. I realize that there are some cost differences, but I think more than anything, the integrity of the process is the most important. Your comments have supported many of the concerns I have and have made. But I believe in this case, we will have to go with the majority until proven different. There's just no impasse here. You know, there's no way to get around. The issue is our interpretations of what both systems do and how much it's gonna cost. And we've asked those questions. We've asked.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you all. I appreciate your concerns.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to number 11, Contract 19-0100 Cement Slurry and Southern Cement Slurry LLC.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, none motion carries. Number 12, Renewal of Contract 19-103R Automotive and Equipment Oils and Lubricants with Petro Choice Universal Lubricants.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 13 is Renewal of Contracts 19-105R Heavy Machinery Rental with Mustang Rental Services. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 14 is Participation Agreement 19-109 for Construction of Public Infrastructure Improvements, Water Line on Arrington Road with LOP End Score Arrington at College Station, C S LLC.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 15 is Consider and Take Action on Brian Utilities, Cost Estimate of $136,366.26 for the relocation of the single-phase electric line consisting of 17 poles with guys and anchors on Fostoff Road. This work is needed in order to accommodate the improvements to be made on Fostoff Site Locating Precinct 2. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 16 is Consider and Take Action on Magellan Pipeline Company Utility Permits to Construct a Road Board for a 20-inch pipeline crossing Rabbit Lane, Dilly Shaw, Tap, Overlights Road, Elmo Whedon Road, and Hoary Whedon Road. Original permit had expired, and they are requesting approval again, Site Locating Precinct 2. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 17 is Budget Mims Work for FY 18/19, 30, 13.1 through 13.8.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 18 is Payment Claims, Claim to be Paid by Brazos County, Claim Number 8010768 through Claim Number 8010980.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 19 is Personnel Action Forms.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion made in second, did, I don't guess Mr. Hamlin's in here.
No.
I just would, wanted to ask him if he'd have stayed about hiring somebody effective December 31st, when he's going to be leaving out, but I thought that was rather odd that you would hire somebody on at that time, but he's not here, so I just can't ask a question. We've got a motion and a second.
Yes.
No more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to adjourn, thank y'all.
Wish everybody a happy new year.
Thank you for letting us speak, you are still head and shoulders above.
Well, you know, it's, it's good that we have a lively discussion.